Hey everyone, G Curse here. Uh, you're probably wondering if this is gonna be a video about Darkside Phil and actually no. Today, he's getting a pass. Uh, I gotta get something off my chest. So, if you're wanting me to talk about Phil, he's not gonna be brought up beyond this point, so... You know, this is mainly a video for people who live in Kelso or the surrounding areas. Or maybe if you wanna know the bullshit that's going on in this fair city, you'll, you know, you can stay tuned and listen. Okay, I love Kelso. I mean, I lo- you know, you will not find somebody who loves this city more than I do. But, I cannot sit back anymore. I am a member of several groups on Facebook, and one of the groups was talking about a store that is, well, it's already coming, moving in, it's moving next door to Big Lots. And they were talking about it, and I saw something that, you know, kind of caught my eye. Now, for, for a couple years, we, you know, reports where Costco was actually gonna be coming down, you know, moving, you know, opening up a store here in Kelso. And that was great, and, you know, in my opinion, that's great. Big businesses bring, you know, job opportunities, and considering that Kelso is on, is right next to the highway, it'll bring more people, which means it stimulates this economy. Well, I haven't heard much until this, you know, what people were talking about on Facebook. And... I just kinda, you know, just read it and think, "Oh, that sucks." But, now that I can actually post longer videos and, you know, not worry about it taking forever to upload, I think I'm gonna go and talk about why I'm so pissed off at the Kelso City Council. Now, this one part, it's based all on speculation, so I'm not sure if it's true, but knowing this fucking city council and its predecessors, I wouldn't be surprised if it's true. Okay, I, this, uh, conversation I was reading, you know, I, uh, come to find out, Costco already had an area set up that they, they were gonna actually, it was part of a, it was gonna be like a megaplex. It was gonna be Costco, Olive Garden, several other businesses, I mean, big-name businesses. Something this, this city hasn't had in years. Well, come to find out, they, uh, asked the Kelso City Council for one favor. One fucking favor, and that, and the favor was basically, "Hey, uh, we don't own the property that's right next to where we're gonna be building, it's Kelso City property. We're willing to build the rest of the stuff, you know, all, all out of our pocket, no tax, you know, incurrence to the city of Kelso at all. All we ask is can you put up some streetlights and some sidewalks so people don't have to be walking on the street?" Because basically from what I could gather, you know, if they were to walk to Costco and stuff here in Kelso, they'd be walking on the shoulder of a street, it'd be dangerous. And there's no lights, so basically, you know, it'd be, it, it'd be like a haven for rapers, rapists, yeah. Now, if I was the mayor of this city, I would think, I should say, "Yeah, yeah, you, you got it." You know, I, I would see the positive of what this business could bring to this small town. Now, I'll get to the negatives also because I know people want me to play devil's advocate and everything, but I could see the positives, and I'd be like, "Yeah, okay, the, in the long run, uh, the, a couple, a couple thousand for, a few thousand for some streetlights and fucking sidewalks, that'd definitely be worth the price in the long run to bring a big company here." Several big companies, yeah. What did they say? They said, "No! No, we're not gonna do that." I read this, and my fucking jaw dropped. Now, I could understand if the property that the, the sidewalks and everything we're gonna be on would be the megaplex's property, but it wasn't, it was fucking city of Kelso. They said, "No." And, basically, they said it in a way that says, "We don't fucking care about anybody, we care about just us, the six or seven fuck-ups on the city council," and they're like, "What we say is the best for the city, and basically, uh, you guys are not needed." What kind of fuck-ups are these people? And this isn't the first bad idea that they've had. The predecessors before them fucking had, you know, the idea, "Hey, let's build a new bridge on Allen Street." Okay, I could understand that, the previous bridge was fucking old, I'll, I'll give them that, yeah. But they did not do any kind of surveys. They didn't anticipate what kind of traffic would be coming through this area in the next 14, 15, hell, even the next 50 years. So what do they do? After building this bridge, they, they then, you know, a couple years ago, decided, "Holy shit, we didn't do enough research, there's, you know, there's too much congestion, we're gonna have to start fucking destroying a whole bunch of more buildings." Thus displacing a whole bunch of more fucking businesses that were on the street, you know, that were right next to this bridge. And what did they do? The businesses that would not, you know, cower to this fucking city council, or the ones that did cower, took big lump sums of money, like, I mean, I'm not talking about like 100,000, I'm talking about millions. Like, if I remember correctly, the fucking furniture world got like 1.3 million or something like that, I may be wrong about the number, but it was in the millions. And Furniture World was a major, they've been there since I moved to fucking Kelso, and this was back in the mid-'80s. So, it's like, how could, you know, and to top it off, we don't make, the city doesn't, we're not like Seattle where we constantly have a good amount of money. Yeah, so, it's like, "Oh, okay, well, we already fucked up, so let's just keep digging ourselves into a bigger fucking hole." A big bit, a mega, mega plex of businesses wanted to come in, get, you know, stimulate this co- Fuck them, they ain't getting, "You want us to build fucking sidewalks? Fuck you, you ain't getting anything." It's bullshit that the fucking needs of those seven can be, goes over what everybody else wants or needs. So if this wasn't bad enough that they're now gonna be, that they've, they've already displaced several businesses, they're gone, they're in Long, uh, they're, they're, all the ones that have been displaced so far are now in Longview. They basically said, "Thanks for the money, Kelso, we're going to Longview." It's fucking bullshit. So what else do they do? Okay, well, they decided, well, our, you know, we're dealing with near double-digit unemployment, "Let's fucking tax our P, our citizens to death." And get, let's, let's give it a noble, noble fucking title as street repairs. Okay, little, little, uh, trivia, or backstory, or whatever you wanna fucking call it. In 1999, Washington State passed, the voters passed, uh, fucking, oh god, like an initiative, because back then, license tab fees were through the fucking ceiling. I mean, for one car, like, for a car made in the '70s, you're paying over a hundred dollars in taps. It was fucking unreal. So we passed an initiative that would mandatory make, it was like set on, like a scale, yeah. And, the car that my mother had, the two cars that she's had within the last dozen years, they were each, uh, set to have like $45 taps, because these were early '80s vehicles. Well, what did they do? They didn't even ask us to vote for this. They, uh, fucking did some kind of, uh, workaround. Basically saying, "Fuck you to the citizens, uh, we're gonna charge you out the ass and you don't gotta have, you don't have the right to fucking say anything about it." So they now call this like a, a travel district, or whatever the fuck title it is. And, if, basically, if you live in Kelso, they're now, it could be anywhere from like 20 to 30 extra dollars. So let's get this straight, you're already paying, uh, let's say, let's say, okay, on the worst year, okay? Every like five or six years, you have to, or nine years, or whatever it is, you actually have to buy a new license plate for your car, it's like a, uh, state rule, you know? So let's say you're paying 60 dollars for tabs. Uh, license plate will run anywhere from 25 to 40 dollars, that's what my mom paid, she paid like roughly 40 dollars if I remember correctly. Okay, so that's 100, 105 dollars roughly right there. Okay, let's add another fucking 20 to 30 extra dollars for this travel district, or whatever the fuck they call it. So, so you're paying almost 130, 140 dollars for tabs, plus a, a license fucking plate. "Oh, travel district, that's not enough, let's start fucking nickel and diming them, let's raise over, you know, every other year, let's fucking raise the, you know, the, uh, sales tax." Good fucking idea, a, a city full of people who cannot barely make it as-is, you know, that relies on certain, you know, like fucking transportation because they can't even afford a car. Well, you know, let, let's tax them other ways. "Oh, oh, our citizens could benefit by having a good-paying job, you know, via a conglomerate of businesses." Well, fuck them, they don't get a sidewalk, they don't get welcome. "Oh, well, let's blindly pay millions of dollars for a bridge that 12 years later, they're, we're gonna fucking have to destroy half of West Lo- Kelso just to get, you know, what we need done?" Maybe they fucking took some extra time and reali-, you know, did some studying, they should've realized what, you know, the, the traffic was gonna be like. But nah, nah, let's just, let's just open up our wallets, the people's wallet, and start throwing the money away, you know, like, "Oh, yeah, yeah, oh, hey, look, it makes nice confetti, woo!" And the thing that, me getting pa- I actually thought, I was thinking about this while I was taking a shower. The thing that this, that me getting so enraged was over something I read back in May. Now, you're probably wondering to yourself, "Well, why don't you guys vote them out?" I wish we could, but several of them have been there for years. It, it's like all, it's like a little boys' club. And if you ain't in that club, you don't get a fucking chance. Well, let's name another fuck-up that the city council's done. Allen Street, near Kelso High in Coweyman. The same streets that I walked when I was in my teens, going to high school and junior high. That street is fucking deadly. It still is. A girl got ran over, I think it was either last year or the year before, ran over. Do you know what the city council's decision was to do when she got ran over? "Oh shit, that street's deadly, let's put up fucking, you know, lights." Yeah, I, I agree, we need lights, but they should realize that a fucking little sissy-ass painted crosswalk with no lights, you know, just basically, you have to cross that thing, uh, you know, it's like a fucking game of Double Dare. Are they gonna fucking start, and keep in mind, this is like during school, you know, like 2:30, 3:30 o'clock, you know, PM, so... "Hell, let's wait till it's nighttime and fucking rush hours going through there." "Oh yeah, that's a great idea, you know, no lights, no-" "But when we are already strapped for cash, let's then put up fucking lights." Why didn't you think about that back in 99, when you, you couldn't walk down that street without seeing car accidents every fucking day? "Oh, uh, well, you want a sidewalk? Well, fuck you, you don't get a sidewalk." And then they're, and then they're like, you know, so, and then they get in their little modes, like, "Well, we need to do something to stimulate the econ-" You guys had a fucking chance to stimulate it! And, and here's just the thing that blows my fucking mind. Okay? They, they view growth as, okay, here's how growth actually works. Say you got a mall full of businesses, let, let's say, 60 businesses, okay? And then, you know, some jo- some businesses come to the city, and then fucking build up another, building, or a construction company comes, builds a building, and then like three more buil- uh, businesses come and move into those buildings, that building. That's fucking growth. What does fucking Kelso think growth is? They think growth is having a fucking empty mall that's, that's over 50% empty, and then like one business come and fill one of those empties. "Oh, that's growth, that's not fucking growth!" It's still stagnation! Growth is adding more to what you already have. And then they're like, "Well, you know, we got, you know, we got some growth today because, uh, fucking Jack in the Box and Cody's, or whatever the fuck it's called, frozen yogurt moved in, you know, they moved into a new building." "Oh, that's growth, yeah, that's fucking nice, let, let's count all the fucking restaurants that have closed in the mall." Yeah, that's fucking real growth right there, Jack. It isn't growth if you're basically replacing what's already gone. It's growth if you have something that's already there, and then you're adding on to it, that's fucking growth. It just astu- it, it boggles my mind how fucking stupid this city council is. The fucking mayor, he's been there for like seven-plus years from what I've heard. How is this asshole still? Yeah, of course, when you're, the city council ran by a bunch of fucking old farts who's been here, and you know, it's a, it's a nice little clique, it's, it's a, it's a nice little circle, you know? As long as they get their money. Oh, and by the way, hey, hey... A few years ago, now, we're, keep in mind, we're already strug- you know, before they started just throwing out money, you know, left and right. They had a, they started having to close down City Hall at an earlier time, something like 4:30 sometimes if I remember correctly. But yeah, we still have the money to fucking throw out and give them raises. And then I watched, uh, I watched the city council meeting on my Roku. And it, I say, now that I think about it, it just fucking pisses me off even more. Uh, they were talking about Kelso getting, like, having the best water in this section of Washington, like they beat out Wa- Longview, Castle Rock, Toledo, and all these other fucking, they're like, "Yeah, yeah, we kicked their asses, or we kicked their butts." "Now that's fucking nice, we have nice water, but some of the people can't even fucking afford to drink the damn stuff." "Oh, yeah, but we got great water." Who's gonna be able to enjoy this great water when you got peo- homeless people, you got fucking people living on the streets that can't even afford to drink the damn shit? And I still think it tastes like garbage, that's why I have a Brita in my goddamn fridge. Well, Jack in the Box and, you know, we got like frozen yogurt. So what? So fucking what? Let's look at, let's, I can name off 10 stores in the last decade, last fucking, let's see, 2013? Let's go last, yeah, 13 years, let, 14 years, okay, 1999. Well, I can name off 10 fucking businesses that, big-time businesses, that have left this area because of, you know, people like the city council and the fucking mall and shit. Okay, let's take, let, let's look at, okay, we got, we got Tops. Well, people are gonna say, "Well, say if we did move to where Tops is." Yeah, but they still fucking left town! It's still a minus. We, we lost Tops, we lost JJ North's, JJ, it's a buffet restaurant. We lost KB Toys, we lost Sam Goody's, we lost Apropos, we lost fucking Sprint, we lost, uh, Walden Books, we've lost JC, no, JC, we lost Sears. We lost the Bon, uh, not Bond, oh god, what's that, One Anchor Store. It's, it's the Anchor Store that's been fucking empty the longest, you, you know what I'm talking about. And pretty soon, we're gonna fucking lose Big Five Sporting Goods, Claire's. And, and Claire's, it's like, "Oh, but we got, we got a, we got another fast food joint, and we got a yo-" Who's gonna fucking prosper from that? Oh yeah, let's not tou- let's not forget that they're now planning multimillion-dollar, you know, train fucking plans for the train tracks. Really? Their fucking train tracks are fine! You're just looking for ways to spend money that we don't have. If I could get on that council, I swear to God, if I had the power, I'd kick those assholes out of there. Because apparently, they don't know what the fuck they're doing anymore. "Opening your eyes, grandpa, you're not living in the 40s anymore." Yeah, Kelso is nice when it's, you know, it's nice because it's small and it has the nature. And I love it, but sometimes you gotta let things go, gramps. "All these whippersnappers, they need jobs, the fuck they, we know what they want." God, I, I really, at times, hate humanity. And not all, I shouldn't say hate hu- I hate people who are blind and deaf. And if there, if there was ever an example of what blind and deaf is, it's this city council. "Oh, hot, hot damn, the, you know, too much traffic on the bridge, we should just start fucking tearing down businesses and we..." "Oh, oh yeah, let's not forget that fucking we lost Furniture World and the Woodstove Store, which has been there for 25 fucking years, over, over a third of how long I've been alive." But we'll just kick them out so we can spend more and more millions of what people got, and we'll, and we'll hide it behind the fact that we're gonna be taxing them and nickel and diming them to death. "Oh, the, the Kelso Police Force needs new cars? Well, the cars they have are reasonably repaired on time, and they're, they're decent." Well, let's fucking just throw money out to that also. "The, the cars need to be sporty-looking, let's throw the money, yeah, they need-" The poli- why the fuck do police need sporty fucking-looking cars? They're police officers! Sporty-looking cop cars was fine in Mad Max, and that's it. It's just a way to throw money out, you know? I swear to God, you know, I, I can imagine how, the, you know, I understand the need to tax, but I also fucking understand the need to have reason, you know, to be able to understand that people don't have money to, to tax them. And how, how, how can people have money? Well, let's bring in businesses! Look, you know, if I was fucking mayor of that, of the Kelso City Council, what I would do is if this conglomerate went to me and go, "Hey, would you mind, willing, you know, to build a sidewalk and put some lights up?" I don't wanna sound, you know, like I'm gay or anything because I'm not, I like the females, but I'd be sucking their dicks to get what needs done, done. "Oh really? You want me to tickle your balls while I'm sucking your dick? If it means us getting the shit, yeah, I would do that." "You know, rub your little asshole, you want me to, yeah, I'll do that, okay, oh, that's nice. 10 more businesses wanna come in? That's fucking great." "We know what everybody want, needs. They don't know what they need, but we know what they need." Fucking city council needs a foot up their ass. Oh, and, and, and that's just, that's not even the beginning of it. Okay, Kelso is on the way to Mount St. Helens. Mount St. Helens is a national park, you know, and a monument and stuff, you know? A major tragedy happened when it blew up and, you know? We had like two sets of mobile, uh, two mobile homes that were like a tourist center for people who could go to and get information about Mount St. Helens. Granted, the stuff was a little dilapidated, nothing, a couple extra thousand, you know, would not fix. What do they do? Hell, let's fucking tear down the thing, the, the trailers at our cost, and fucking move them to somewhere, you know, where we're, we're gonna have to pay rent possibly, which is the mall. Okay, so let, okay, to save money, the Kelso City, the, the Kelso City Council moved the library to the mall. Who the fuck goes to the mall to, to go to a library? Really, come on! I know I heard that there's a fucking mall in Vancouver, well, that mall can have that fucking library. I don't like to go to this mall because this mall's run by a bunch of fucking morons. So, so we're, let's just ca- let's just fucking charge more money for rent, for this, for that. You know, I wouldn't be surprised if tomorrow they start giving them those fucking money bukakis, you know? And they wonder why so many of us are upset at them. Fucking idiots if you ask me, they're stupid! Stupid fucking idiots! Kelso malls losing three, two businesses? Well, you know, we got Jack in the Box, and, and so it's all okay, you know? Fuck you, you fucking overpretentious, geriatric fucks! Well, the, uh, Regal Cinema's gonna be, uh, renting the spot where JC, uh, where Sears once was, and they're gonna turn it into a mega, mega, uh, theater complex. That's grow- that's not fucking growth, they're moving from another spot on the mall property! I love how they think that growth is just adding another business. Yeah, once, if, if you were lucky to add all the businesses that would equal up to where the ones that have been gone, and then more, that would be growth. Right now, it's stagnation, it's a minus. I, I honestly think that they, I, I would, I, oh my god, I think that they think the perfect view of Kelso, version of Kelso would just be a bunch of homes and no fucking businesses, because that's the way it's going to be going, you know, it's like... It's bullshit, you know, it's, ah! God, I'm giving myself a headache thinking about this. Oh, and here's, here's a, here's another bright idea. The Long, the Kelso City Council is thinking about adopting, uh, stoplight cameras, or camera stoplight, whatever the fuck they call it. They're basically, if the camera thinks they're fucking going through a red light, it's gonna take a picture and you get a ticket. Gee, isn't there something that's already something like that? Oh yeah, fucking police officers! Why the shit fuck should we have to be pay, you know, pay out the ass for a device that's been proven to be faulty 99% of the fucking time? Oh yeah, that's right, it's just because, you know, we get a little bit of cu- kickbacks from these camera companies. The money goes in their pocket, it isn't fucking helping us. "Oh, we, yeah, it, it'll go help you, it's gonna go to, uh, the fo- the road repair fund." No, it's not! No, it's not! When they fucking introduced that, the travel district, this taxing district for pe- for car tabs, and, and they fucking went behind our backs to do it without getting a vote... And, and they fucking went behind our backs to do it without getting a vote. Do you know why? Because they know that, number one, we're gonna vote that son of a bitch down and that they will be voted out, but they figure that if they can, uh. You know, find a workaround, you know, saying it's some kind of fucking district, it's all okay. That money that that district's gonna get is not gonna go to the fucking road repair program, I can tell you that. It's gonna go to their pockets and, you know, it's the same shit a different day. But we got Jack in the Box. Well, let's just forget that the food court of the mall which used to have like fucking. Twelve, thirteen restaurants now only has fucking one restaurant, yeah, but, yeah, we got growth going on up in, up in here. The only growth that's going on is their fucking pocketbooks. And I, I hope that this, you know, I know it's not gonna get to them right away, but somebody who's on YouTube, you know, somebody who watches this that lives in Kelso. That could possibly know the mayor goes, hey, mayor, uh, you should listen to this, there's a, there's a, a, a large overweight guy who's fucking pissed at you guys and he's speaking the goddamn truth. I can imagine that him and his little friends are gonna have to please come over here and go. You, you know, you gotta kinda quiet that down because this is, Kelso's no longer really, you know, people friendly, it's anti-business, it's basically fucking Nazi Germany because basically you got no freedoms anymore. And that's basically what it is, fucking going behind your backs, telling you what you need that, you know, they know what you need. All these fucking little. It, it, it's bullshit, that's what it is. And the fact that these, that ninety percent of this town is filled with old people is just another reason why they're still there. Old people don't wanna trust the younger generation, they'd rather trust their own, it, I swear to god, Kelso is like the fucking Smithsonian. And you wanna know something outside where I live? Those videos that I made about Kelso, how much I love Kelso, which I do, you know those red houses? That's a fucking senior citizens village. It's the Smithsonian! I'm gonna stop this rant, I'm done for tonight. Uh. If you're from Kelso, think about what I said, try, you know, we, one person can't make the difference alone, it takes a group. And, you know, stand up for yourself if, when they have their meetings. Go to these meetings if you can, tell them that they're fucking up. Because right now they think that they can't do no wrong and we're, we're only gonna pay, you know, long, in the long run. Once we, you know, we're, once we get beyond that point of no return, we're fucked. This is Gaming Curse, G Curse, Jeff Miller. Uh, the survivalist of the Calis County wasteland, I'll see you all later, peace.